Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 11th, 2025. Our first order of business, please stand if you are able and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Agenda review, item number two.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We will move into item number three, the drainage. Mr. Ryan Hinnaker, would you please join us and state your name for the record?
Good morning, everyone. Ryan Hinnaker, County Drainage System Coordinator with the Property and Environmental Resources Department. I have four bid awardings this morning. I will start right out with County Ditch 78. Quotes were solicited from multiple contractors for the previously approved improvement work for County Ditch 78. The improvement affects portions of County Ditch 78 Branch 1, including the replacement and upsizing of subsurface tile lines for portions of Branch 1. On January 31st of 2025, four quotes were submitted for the County Ditch 78 Branch 1 improvement work. The engineer's estimate for construction is estimated at $64,657.75. The four submitted quotes are provided in the table below with the lowest estimate submitted by Stevens Bobcat and Backhold LLC with a quote of $45,101 and the highest bid submitted by Newman Excavating LLC with a quote of $69,660. ISG and Blue Earth County Drainage Authority have worked with Stevens Bobcat and Backhold LLC on previous projects and repairs, which were completed successfully with no issues. Stevens Bobcat and Backhold LLC has provided proper references and ISG recommends awarding the improved contract, excuse me, the improvement contract for County Ditch 78 Branch 1 to Stevens Bobcat and Backhold LLC. Requested action for today, we are asking the County Ditch 78 Drainage Authority to award the improvement contract for the approved improvement plans for subsurface tile installation for portions of Branch 1 to Stevens Bobcat and Backhold LLC in the amount of $45,101.
Thank you, Ryan. You've heard the recommendation. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I believe everybody in the room knows what year I graduated. Because of that, being a landowner on ditch 78, I will abstain from this vote, please.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that clarification. Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right. Number two on the list is County Ditch 86, awarding for repairs. Estimates were solicited from multiple contractors for upcoming repairs, which include larger tree and brush removal for portions of County Ditch 86 located in Beaufort Township. The majority of the planned repairs consist of tree and brush removal from recent redetermination of benefits proceedings. A small portion of the bench area will also need to be constructed for future maintenance and inspection purposes. Two estimates were submitted for this proposed work. Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC submitted an estimate of $79,500. The lowest estimate was received by Newman Excavating LLC in the amount of $49,500. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority has worked with Newman Excavating LLC on other repairs and projects, which were completed successfully with no issues. Newman Excavating LLC has the proper experience and equipment to perform the project. We are asking the County Ditch 86 Drainage Authority to award the bid for repair work to County Ditch 86 to Newman Excavating LLC for the provided estimate of $49,500.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second for the work on County Ditch 86. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right. Number three involves County Ditch 89 bid awarding. Estimates were solicited from multiple contractors for the previously approved repair work for County Ditch 89. The repairs include, in the initial phase for which estimates were solicited, including trees and brush clearing. A second phase involving cleaning and side slope repairs of the open ditch will come after the trees and brush have been removed. On January 24th of 2025, three estimates were submitted for the County Ditch 89 repair work. The engineer's estimate for these repairs was $142,269.23. The three submitted estimates are provided in the table below with the lowest estimates submitted from Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC with a lump sum estimate of $69,614 and the highest bid submitted by Borneke Construction LLC with a lump sum estimate ISG and Blue Earth County Drainage Authority have worked with Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC on previous project and repairs, which were completed successfully with no issues. Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC has provided proper references and ISG recommends awarding the repair contract for County Ditch 89 to Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC. We are asking the County Ditch 89 Drainage Authority to award the repair contract for the approved repair plans for tree and brush clearing for County Ditch 89 to Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC in the amount of $69,614.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for County Ditch 89 for $69,614. Is there any questions?
When you put these bids out.
Yes, sir.
Do you put out what the engineer's estimate is?
Yes. Yep. Yep, that's included in the RFQ.
Just interesting that we got one at half the price.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed. I'm not disappointed with the number, but yes.
No, I'm just, it's just surprising.
They must need, usually figure out they need to work.
It's all good.
Yeah, and I think these guys like to keep guys busy this time of year, but that is a pretty low number, so, yep. All right, I got a motion and a second for County Ditch 89 bid award. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right. My fourth and final bid awarding involves County Ditch 95. Estimates were solicited from multiple contractors for upcoming repairs for portions of County Ditch 95 located in Mapleton Township. The majority of the planned repairs consist of tree and brush removal. Access to the perennial buffer strip area is required under Minnesota Drainage Statute 103E.021 subdivision 6, which requires perennial vegetative buffer areas on open ditch public drainage systems. Perennial vegetation is not to impede future maintenance or inspections of the public drainage system. Two estimates were submitted for the proposed work for County Ditch 95. Newman Excavating LLC submitted an estimate of $103,000, excuse me, $103,900 and the lowest estimate was received by Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC in the amount of $65,000 even. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority has worked with Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC on other repairs and projects, which were completed successfully with no issues. Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC has the proper experience and equipment to perform the proposed work. We are asking the County Ditch 95 Drainage Authority to award the repair work to Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee LLC for the provided estimate of $65,000 even. That's all I have.
So moved.
Thank you, Ryan. Got a motion and a second for the County Ditch 95 repair. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
See you in a couple hours.
All right.
All right, our next item on the agenda, item number four, is our Public Works. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
How's Ryan today?
The first thing that I brought to pass around is a piece of shrapnel. This is from the charges that were used to sever the bridge beam. And you can kind of get the feel for the dimension. I think they were linear and directional, but they weren't really big around. That's one of the faces of it, so maybe you'd find it interesting.
And how far away was that found?
It was up on the road, so, you know, four or five hundred feet. So it's obviously why we set a large perimeter to keep people back and away and safe.
You wouldn't want to be hit by that.
No.
Oh.
A large piece of copper. A few of them were up on the road. They did put some shielding, but they kind of shoot out sideways, we found out, so.
It's very sharp.
All right, the first action item is consideration of a resolution authorizing right-of-way acquisitions for county stated highways 15 and 28 in the city of St. Clair. This is for the reconstruction project that is planned for 2025. I recommend approval of said resolution.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the resolution for 15 and 28 in St. Clair. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Second action item is consideration of an intent-to-cost-participate agreement with the city of Lake Crystal for a trail along county stated highways 6 and 79 connecting to Lily Lake Estates subdivision on the northwest corner of town to the city. They have successfully applied for Transportation Alternatives grant that would fund 75% of the project construction costs, and they are currently applying for Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Local Trails, I believe, grant that, in an ideal circumstance, would fund the remaining 25% of the project construction costs. Per the county policy, the city's paying 100% of the project development cost because this is a locally initiated trail project, and they will be, the county will be responsible for 50% of the remaining construction costs if the DNR grant application were to be unsuccessful. It'd be about 12.5% of the construction cost, which is detailed in Exhibit A at the back of the agreement. So very similar to what we've entered into with Eagle Lake for their trail project. I recommend approval of said cooperative construction agreement. I'm sure you intend the cost-participate agreement.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. We have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second to accept the participation agreement for County Road 6 and 79. Any discussion or questions? Pretty excited we got the funding, that's awesome.
Yeah, a big chunk of it.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, action item number three is consideration of final payment for project number 007669008, the Minneopa Tunnel Repair on County Stated Highway 69. S.M. Hinches &amp; Sons Incorporated was the contractor. Original contract amount $187,500. Final payment amount $8,694.75 for a total contract amount, final $173,895. I would recommend a word of the final, approval of final contract payment.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the final payment for 007669008. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, action item number four is consideration of bids for one new 2025 motor grader with snow wing and roller attachment. As typical, we received two bids with John Deere 772 GP and a Caterpillar 150 motor graders. The total with trade-in and snow equipment for the John Deere was $363,165, whereas the Caterpillar was $385,960. The John Deere was also about $2,000 cheaper on the walk-and-roll handy hitch packer that goes behind the machine at $33,660. I would recommend a word of the purchase to RDO Equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to buy a new road grader from RDO. Any discussion?
The slope control and joystick are standard on the John Deere?
It's getting to be where you have to special order. I think we talked about that maybe last year of going to the joystick controls becoming more common in the industry versus the old-fashioned handle rack on the machine. You have to almost special order the handle rack now, so we're trying to shift to go more with the times and what industry is using for.
I'm just saying, is that standard on the John Deere?
I don't know for sure.
Because I see there's not a cost extra for the John Deere.
Well, the reason, yeah, so that would be standard. We have other specifications that we include on the machine, and the John Deere has some more of those items standard than the Caterpillar does.
That's what I, thank you.
Yep, gotcha.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Next action item in your package is consideration of bids for the 2025 motor grader rental contract. This does not, based on the contract amount, does not require board approval under the county procurement policy. However, based on our past conversations, I wanted to continue to bring it forward unless I'm directed otherwise. Just knowing we've had significant conversations historically about theoretically adding another motor grader, which we just approved, and then know what the cost of that is, plus another operator out of our Vernon Center shop too, that would, could theoretically replace this maintenance contract. So we've talked about that in the past. Space is limited in Vernon Center. We could make it work, but, you know, for the annual cost, we've been continuing with the motor grader rental contract. Again, we only received one bid from Erosion Control Plus, previously Wirth's. Their prices went up approximately 5% to $97,600.
All right, I have a motion to accept.
Sure, I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Some discussion. Kevin, what are your thoughts? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. Anyway, I'm glad this is an annual contract.
Correct.
So we got a chance to do that with a lot of things going on. I mean, I haven't heard any complaints on this road since, been almost 24 hours, from two different people, so I think that I do appreciate Public Works kind of keeping an eye on what's going on, but it's like anything else in life, it's kind of up to who the operator is and what their experience is, and I guess personally, I don't see this last few months of drought as being really a fair fight. Nobody can do a good job of keeping roads in shape when you have no moisture to work with.
Correct.
So I think that's something we need to understand, that everybody's roads are not great shape right now because of the lack of moisture and things like this, but I do think this is something we have to at least annually review and keep an eye on and see what, what Public Works Department opinion is of, of the job down there. It's always hard when you get one bid, so.
Yeah, we used to get Peterson, Peterson Motor Grader to bid it, but they haven't been bidding at the last time.
Tried to talk them into it yesterday morning. They were at the conversation as well.
Okay.
And I would just echo what Commissioner Pap is saying, that I got more calls last year, I think, than I have since I've been on the board with just the wet, wet, wet spring and then the dry fall.
Right.
Lot of complaints or concerns about our gravel roads.
Yeah.
It was just, it was just the year last year.
Yeah, unfortunately, people, like Commissioner Pap said, people don't understand that if you don't have moisture and we go out there and blade the roads, we tend to make it worse in all honesty, because now you've got a loose surface that doesn't have adequate moisture to recompact and reset up, so you kind of create a worse situation.
So I think, yeah, I also appreciate, let's just keep discussing this every year, and if you guys come up with a different plan or something that you think would work, just make sure you let us know.
Yep, and I think from previous conversations, you know, we said that if we had the full-time operator machine, it would help us just around the county more too with other projects and such with respect to our workforce, but it is a continuing ongoing cost then of replacing a motor grader every 10, 12 years and, you know, an annual cost of an employee, so.
Well, you'll be starting budgeting discussions with the administrator pretty quick here, so that should be the appropriate place to start talking.
Well, I'm not advocating one way or the other, just wanting to share with the board.
No, I just understand.
Yep.
We've been talking about for a long time.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the contract for the motor grader. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, the next one is a memorandum of agreement with the Minnesota Valley of Chapter of the Isaac Walton League Green Crew Program for our Parks Department. This is an agreement to support development of leadership skills for the design development and leadership of science-based conservation issues with actionable locally executed solutions. We're going to learn more about this. They're actually going to come speak at the Park Advisory Committee, County Board Joint Meeting that's coming up in, I believe, in March, so they'll be speaking more about this, but they did approach us looking for a partnering opportunity out at our county parks, so we, again, we've got a programmatic agreement with Minnesota State Mankato's Parks and Outdoor Recreation Department as well, so trying to foster these kinds of partnerships where maybe we can get some benefit within our parks and they can use the parks for education and, and growth of youth, so.
I would move to approve.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second for the Green Crew Program. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right. Information updates kind of quickly. County Stated Highway 5 from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue, Bolton Mink submitted 60% design plans. We are in the process of reviewing those now, so that project is moving forward. 15 and 28 in St. Clair, we have an open house scheduled for Thursday, February 20th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the St. Clair City Hall. And then on County Stated Highway 13 from US 169 to County Stated Highway 10, talking more about the Minnesota Push and Control Agency's administrative penalty order that was issued. We did meet with them last week and reviewed how they structured that administrative penalty order and the violations. With that being said, there were some violations we were able to argue, but not all, so they were going to be revisiting those. We'll have another follow-up call today to see where this is heading. I don't know that I'm optimistic it's going to dramatically change the overall assessment, but I feel like we've argued our case and then we've got a decision to make of whether we want to continue to legally challenge it or move on, and given the cost, it's kind of challenging to pour tremendous amount of resources into it, so. County Stated Highway 10 from the west county line to Cassaw 20, project plans are nearing 60%. The County Stated Highway 40 slope repair project plans and memorandum are completed and submitted. We need to obtain an easement to access the bottom of the river. We'll be working on that in the coming weeks. That's a real That's a relatively small project. We'll give the contractor kind of a fair amount of time to get to it when conditions are fit. Then we have County Stated Highway 10 from Vernon Center to one mile east, including the bridge replacement. I'm sorry, 10 from the West County Line to 20, I got those two switched around. 10 from the West County Line to 20, right-of-way acquisition is underway, and we're bidding that sometime this spring is what we anticipate, assuming all right-of-way permits come in appropriately. And then 10 from Vernon Center to one mile east, including the bridge, we're nearing 60% plans there. Maintenance, no really major activity updates. The crews have been out this week plowing, mender drifting, insulting and sanding. Really, it's kind of status quo. And last but not least, I did include a rapid end dam update, relatively brief given the fact that I was just here two weeks ago, so there's really only about a week and a half that have elapsed between the reports. But on the County Stated Highway 9 Bridge update, we've been extremely busy over the last few weeks coordinating and reviewing the contractor's plan to sever and fell the beams. It was a tremendous lift and very thankful to Jesse, to the Sheriff's Office for all of their help and coordination in making it a successful and safe endeavor, keeping the public informed, but also keeping them back away from the blast site for the contractor and everybody's safety. closure worldwide, as we discussed. Used directional explosive charges, they severed and fell the beams last Wednesday, went as planned. Cleanup of the fell beams and concrete rubble will continue.
Where's that, where's that concrete going?
I don't, it's a, I don't remember off the top of my head, I can give it to you.
I just was curious.
It's going to, yeah, to a downtown for it to be recycled for use.
If it was being recycled.
Yeah, they won't bury it.
So we really have no participation in that? Concrete belongs to?
No, typically, we haven't gotten into reusing concrete rubble waste. We let the contractor kind of find the most economically use for it. We have been keeping our bituminous millings and then crushing that for recycled asphalt product because we like to use that on shouldering.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. On, for the dam, on January 27th, we had a call with FEMA. We did provide inspection of the five steel tainer gates and some additional damaged members on the steel tainer gates that were damaged above and beyond the 2019 damage. So we had a report from 2019, we provided that, and we provided an update with additional damages incurred for them to make their assessment. We shared the LIDAR River Channel Survey to FEMA, so they're working on finalizing their quantification of all of the damages, and a definite timeline still unknown. Once we get the quantities assessed, we'll make a process of meeting with BAR and FEMA to determine the scope of repairs that would take to return the dam back to a pre-flood condition adequately, back to an operational or quasi-operational status, so that those costs could then be considered for rolling over into a alternatives project. So still a long ways to go, it's moving slowly, but I think we're going to be starting to see some of their quantity breakdowns in the coming weeks, so that's a good sign, it's a little bit of progress, and we'll be sharing those with BAR Engineering to have them review and validate that FEMA's numbers seem appropriate. So I don't have a lot else on the dam, I'd be happy to answer any, or dam or bridge, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Alright, any other follow-along questions for County Engineer? Tina? Thank you Ryan for your report.
Thanks Ryan.
Alright, at this point, we'll move down to item number five, administration. Mr. Bob Meyer?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, his first item is the county board minutes for January 28th.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
Will do approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills. Any discussion?
What's a hearth connection?
Hearth connections?
Yeah.
That's a supportive housing firm that we work with.
That's right. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Tab eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We just have informational items for the board today. We do have a promotion of a Waste and Recycling Technician 2 to an appraiser in our Property and Environmental Resources Department, so we initiated recruitment to refill that Waste Recycling Technician position. We also have filled 2 911 telecommunicator positions in our dispatch center. And then we had a resignation of an Assistant County Attorney, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions? Human Resources? Okay, we'll move on.
Tab nine then is a list of committee assignments. We have one adjustment that I guess we missed back in January, and that is the Emergency Communications Joint Powers Board, where we had Tim Moore listed as an alternate. Mr. Moore has left the organization, and so appointing Eric Weller into that alternate position.
Do I have a motion?
Yep, I do.
Can you make that motion?
Second. Got a first and a second for the change on the committee assignments. Eric will do a good job helping me out with that. He's been doing a great job participating in the statewide Emergency Communication Board meeting that I a lot of times can't get on, so I appreciate all his help on that. Perfect person to have in that spot. Tim did a great job too, though. He did a good job. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the adjustment on the committee assignments.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab 10 in your packet is a professional service agreement with Bolton and Mink to prepare an application, or application material for flood and erosion buyouts for seven damaged properties or at-risk homes. The county has participated in the HSEM buyout grants in the past with some success. The June flooding and continued erosion of riverbanks has created more need for this grant program in our county. Blue Earth County staff really don't have the time available to prepare the grant application materials, given the number of homes currently eligible and the potential funding, and as such, we are recommending that the county contract with Bolton and Mink to prepare the applications. I think it's important that the board know that if, if we move ahead with this agreement, there is some risk to the county in that homeowners do have the option to opt out at a later date. So if we move ahead with this contract, the county could be responsible for some of these costs. If all the properties stay in, or the ones that do, they would be eligible for approximately 75% reimbursement under the grant program. So that grant will reimburse 75% of the value of the home and these costs that we're incurring for the application processing and removal of the homes. So it's a bit of a risk that the county might be taking here of some property owners back out, but we can also share that cost against the remaining applicants that go forward. The county staff will still be involved in working with Bolton and Mink, and so that cost can also against, go against the local share. So our staffing cost will reduce the overall local share, if you will, that's remaining. So, staff are recommending we move ahead with this contract with Bolton and Mink to get these applications in. We're on kind of a tight timeline because our emergency management plan expires at the end of March, and we'd like to get this in before then.
I'll move approval.
Motion and a second for the FEMA buyouts with Bolton and Mink. Any other discussion or question or comments? I had a couple questions about the per household, but you already answered them. Any other comments? Discussion? Good project? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. That looks like that brings me to the end of our agenda. Bob, do you have anything else for us?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Alright, we will start with committee reports. I'm just going right down the line here, so today it's my turn. Do not skip me. So with that, I will start. After our last board meeting, we had a work session, had several items on the agenda that were discussed at length. Then we were all up at the MICA Annual Meeting, which got a lot of information about health and human services, got to meet the new director. It was a good drive up and back, but I thought the program was worth, worth our time and energy. And then that following Friday, we had legislative work session. Thank you Josh and the staff for putting that together. I thought we had a great turnout, had good discussion, got into a little bit more of a debate between the senators than, than what we really needed to hear, but it was good to hear the conversation. It would have been fun to weigh in on it, but wasn't our, we weren't in that battle at that point. So I think they understand our frustrations with a couple of the things they're trying to pass down the line. Then we had extension meeting, they got a couple new members, everything went really well there. We had a relatively short meeting, I told them not to expect that every time, because we normally don't. Department head, got several updates from some department staff. Planning and zoning items, we had three or four items on the agenda. The first two had people testify on the items, they'll probably both be at the planning and zoning, or at the meeting next month. The gravel pit with the haul route for Corbets is a little bit of a discrepancy there on how they want to get the gravel there, but they're going to be closing 169 down for the summer, so that's the easiest fastest route, so we'll hear that. And then I had my SECB legislative meeting on Thursday, and not a whole lot new going on there. We already had everything in place for what we want to do with the session, so they're just waiting for them to get back and get in touch with them. And then several calls on some issues going on over on Madison Lake with some races or some cars running on the lakes over there, so we got a couple people upset in that area. And then a few other calls on some gravel roads. That's my report. Vance?
Okay. That's a pretty good report you got there.
I thought I'd get it started.
Yeah, there you go. Well, I was at the same work session you were at the last board meeting. Next day, I had a Blue Earth, Necklet County Safe Roads, which is our local towards zero death Zoom meeting. I was with the rest of you at the MICA meeting, and, and on Friday, I was with the rest of you at the legislative work session. On Monday, the 3rd, I had a MRCI board meeting. On the 4th, I had a NACO membership committee meeting. On the 5th, we had a department head meeting, and on the 6th, we had the regional towards zero death steering committee meeting. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Vance? Mark?
Basically, it's been said, January 28th, after work session, we had work session then, and January 30th, we had our MICA Annual Meeting, everybody was there. And then January 31st legislative work session. And like I said, that's kind of interesting to have, particularly the senators and so jostling around a little bit. February 5th, and a department heads meeting. And that pretty much concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mark. Kevin?
Like mentioned, I was also participated in the January 28th and 31st work session, as well as the MICA meeting and the Extension Committee Meeting on February 3rd, as mentioned. Additionally, January 30th, landowner meetings, JD 48, CD 27, and CD 56, I attended. February 3rd, we had our AMC board member orientation. Participated at the AMC Drainage Conference, we had 179 participants at that, they did a very nice job again. And then on the 7th, we had our True Transit Advisor Committee Meeting. And then on the February 10th, the NACO Ag Leadership Call, as well as the Minnesota River One Watershed One Plan Policy Committee Meeting. That ends my report.
Kevin? Patty?
Alright. Repeat, repeat, repeat.
We spent a lot of time together.
Yes, we did. The 28th work session, 30th MICA, 31st the local legislators, the 5th the department head, and yesterday I had a, no, that was the 7th, I had a TDS Budget Committee Meeting, and that ends my report.
Alright, thank you Patty. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.